Sound phone. Good evening. Oh, cell phone. Yeah, cell phones in this meeting. We have implication laid by Councilor Jonathan.
Let us pray. Calling God as we gather together as mayor and council to deal with the business that is at hand, we pray for your gift of wisdom and discernment. We'll have knowledge from on high as we try to take care of the problems that we face and give you thanks for all the blessings that you have provided to each of us during this special season. We are reminded when we see the lights on the square that your son Jesus is the light of the world and that when we see the colored lights that we know that he died for all people. And so Father, we give you thanks. We ask that all that we say and do be a blessing in your name. In Christ's name we pray.
(Inaudible). (Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? We will in 13 council meetings. All right. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes in November 13, 2018 council meeting. And a second? Any discussion? Is the problem moving to a second that we approve the minutes in November 13 council meeting? All in favor? Let me see, I have same right, motion carries. Now the approval of the meeting agenda itself. Motion for that. Make a motion that we approve the meeting agenda for tonight. Second? Any discussion? Is the problem moving to a second? We accept the approval of the agenda, all in favor? Let me know if I sign aye. May I have same right, motion carries. Now we have our reports. Jonathan, Downtown Government Association, Ms. Lisa Rock.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. We had a great kickoff to the holiday season at our annual Shop Small Darlington Open House last Thursday on the public square with Darlington Recreation, DJ Dandy Lockamy, Santa Claus, and Snow. Several businesses around the school square stayed open late, offering refreshments and special deals for that night only. We had craft vendors and a food truck on at the courthouse. We handed out all of our Shop Small tote bags and held giveaways for prizes that had been donated from the Jeweler's Bench, the Darlington Lines Club, Luna's Closet, and the D D R A. Thanks to American Express and all the people who participated in this annual event. To continue to encourage residents to shop at Darlington businesses, we have our annual Shop Darlington promotion, which runs from Thanksgiving to Christmas. There's some extra entry forms up here if anybody in the audience didn't get one or needs one. Residents are encouraged to shop for a chance to win one of three $100 fuel cards. Restaurants, retail stores, and gift certificates count. Prescriptions, fuel and tobacco do not. So every time, every five receipt you get from five different Darlington businesses count as one entry. So the more you shop, the more entries you can collect. And they could be a copy of the receipt in case you need it for returns or something. The entry forms will be located at Area Businesses, the Darlington Chamber of Commerce, and City Hall. You can find copies in the news and press through December 19th, online at buildupdarlington.org or on the D D R A Facebook page. And if you know a business that wants to have a stack of these cards to hand out, let me know or have them call me and I will deliver them to them. The entries need to be postmarked by December 31st and the drawing will be held January 7th. I hope people will take the time to visit a different business that they normally just drive by to see what they offer because many of the shops have a variety of items which would be unexpected. If you don't, if you don't look, you won't know what they have. For example, Darlington Office Supply on the Square has your typical office supplies like paper and pads and pens, but the business also has a lot of learning games, toys, Bible covers, cards, candles, things you wouldn't necessarily, when you think office supply, think of. Our businesses do try to have a variety of unique items to satisfy the customers. Flowers baskets by Becky on Russell Street, which is a member of the D D R A, they have a lot of cute gift items and decorts and certainly much more than just flower arrangements or wreath. But we hope people will use this as a chance to expand their shopping horizon and check out what Darlington has to offer because we want to reward these shop owners that are trying to fill their customers' needs with unique items. And it's certainly stuff that you wouldn't necessarily find in those stores. You don't have to go to the store to get your goods. And you can certainly find unique and good items in our town if you're willing to take a chance to look. And finally, the Downtown Christmas Market is coming up. It will be held from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Saturday, December 15th in the Fellowship Hall at Trinity United Methodist Church on Pearl Street. There's going to be free face painting. There's going to be a coloring station for the kids so the kids can be occupied while Mom and Dad shop. There's going to be plenty of vendors, crafts, and Santa will be there at noon. So we hope everybody can come out and check out and get their last minute shopping done. And there'll be certainly a lot of unique gifts. Right now we got a local pottery, a person that does pottery is coming and she came last year and had a lot of wonderful items, handmade note cards, a lot of different things that you can't just find anywhere. There's actually one person that's going to have a, it's going to take two booths, it's going to have wooden toys, the old style toys that are, you know, now they're finding science. It's a lot better than looking at a screen all the time. So maybe something to think about if you've got little ones. I appreciate the opportunity.
Everything was nice and, you know, women love clothing.
Oh, yes.
And we walked over, we got up there, the jewel vent, we saw the clothing outside. We were excited. We had a store to shop from.
Oh, yeah.
They loved that. Had some nice tops, nice stuff up there.
And we're also recruiting, we recruit these vendors to try and get them locations in town as well, so.
Want to come?
And that person may be working on the shop.
I hope so. I told, um, there I told the gym, I told them, get your sister on the car up there, come next door and put some clothes in there for Christmas. That was nice. Everything was nice.
Thank you.
Greater Donovan Chamber of Congress, it's hard.
Well, I think everyone will agree that Light Up Darlington this year was a huge success. You can't go in the square without a smile. It's all aglow with lights. And our Christmas tree is spectacular. It is thirty some odd feet tall. And I want to thank everyone that contributed their love, their time, their money to help with this project. It was a joint effort and it could not have been done without every single person that attended meetings, that contributed money, that contributed ideas. It wasn't just a one person show or a two person show. It was everybody. And if you will indulge me for just one second, we have angel trees around the square. All of the Bradford Payers, people gave money in memory of or in Thanksgiving of or because they loved Darlington. And if you will bear with me one second, I want city council to hear who these people were. We raised a lot of money from these angel trees. Coached in memory of Coach Jesus Stokes, Carolyn, and if I butcher these names, I apologize. Carolyn Affleckins, Mary Beth Lots, Brandon Fly, Harold and Vivian Strickland and Roosevelt Seekers, Douglas Mounds, Benny Gregory, Owen Cagan, Ray Norwood, Dr. Willis, Mr. and Mrs. Welch, Vivian O'Neil, and Sergeant Terrence Caraway. In Thanksgiving of Todd Hardy gave because he was grateful for his family, First Church of God gave in Thanksgiving of Jesus. And Bella Denistry gave for all of Darlington's first responders. I loved that one. I love Darlington. These are people who gave money. Carolina Bank, Kinghorn Insurance of PD, Glenn and Paige Chestnut, Robert June, Business World gyms. And in memory of my parents, Dr. Ralph Hobbs. We could not have done this without D S I Metals for their donation of all of the wreaths for the stores on the squares. They gave us all the candles for the courthouse windows. Genesis Healthcare donated the uplighting at the base of the trees around the square. And the Kiwanis Club. Bill Moore was out there one day when it was blowing like the Norse gods were blowing the wind so hard. He worked tirelessly to build that beautiful draw that the Christmas tree sits on. So thank you to the Kiwanis Club. And they donated that. And for the tree lighting ceremony. And for everyone that helped me do hot chocolate and homemade cookies for the kids. I know a lot of adults wanted that hot chocolate and those homemade cookies and I hated turning them away, but it was just for the kids. And the smiles on those faces were wonderful. I haven't seen kids smile and laugh on the square in a long, long time and it was great. The Chamber's annual banquet will be held on February the 28th. We're going to start taking nominations for the awards this coming Monday, December the 10th. And that doesn't sound right, it's Sunday, Monday, December the 10th is next week. Nominations can be made to the Chamber via email or snail mail. The nominations for the awards this year will be for community pride, which can be a business or a person, Business Leader of the Year, Citizen of the Year, and the Legacy Award. So if you know anyone deserving of any of these awards, please send me an email with why you think they should be awarded one of these awards and it will go through the process. Thank you very much and have a very, very Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you. Now I'm taking it for a sign. Shoot. One finished business number seven, second reading of ordinance 2018-18 zoning of 110 Nez Pierce Drive. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll motion that we approve the second reading of ordinance 2018-18 zoning of 110 Nez Pierce Drive.
A second. Okay. Any discussion on that? Is the problem moving to second that we have ordinance 2018-18 zoning of 110 Nez Pierce Drive? All in favor of the motion that I signed aye? May I have same right, motion carries? When I started with this, it started with just a few, but after I started talking on this rock and looking at a whole lot of things, I found there was a lot of people that was engaged in helping make Darlington a better place. And it gave me much joy. To get this together, I had Ms. Janice Applewhite to help me with this. It really brings a smile on my face when I have so many people helping with the cleanup, cleanup Darlington, the garden club all over the place, helping with scholarships, the decorations around the town, it looks bright. I'm a Christmas person. I love lights and I love to see lights. Cleaning of the graveyard, veterans memorial, helping children whether you do that, whether baseball sponsorship, whether any community need that your organization or club might do, civic group might do, donations of food and helping, providing bicycle helmets for the kids. And the Christmas tree on the square. Well, one thing, nobody can say that the Christmas tree this year is leaving. It's bad straight and it's beautiful and I really appreciate the God club for that. And the fundraisers that we have all over the city for the Caraway family and others. And in fact, I'm invited to another one on December the 16th. So we're just having fundraisers for that because that was a sad time, what happened on October the 3rd. And anyway, what I want to do, now if I left somebody out, and I see right now I left somebody out, but I got some more, I'm giving them out, still be giving them out. Don't charge to my heart, charge to my head. Because when I got it, I thought it was about five, but when I got to it, it was so many. So I'm going to need some help, Brian. Come on and bring someone down. And if you're not here tonight, you can get it later. Huh? Is anybody here from the Darlington Professional Women? Ain't nobody here from Darlington Professional Women?
Yes, aren't you in that group?
Oh, I'm on a hiatus this year.
Oh, okay.
Well, we'll do that later. America leads the post 210. All right. Anybody here from that? I know you got some more in your group and we want to thank you for what y'all do. I know a lot of things you do, we appreciate that. Okay, we have America leads the post 13. Now, when I talked with him tonight, you know what he told me? He might can't come, don't give it to anybody else. So I got to put this one back. Tell him to, Darlington Lines Club. Who we have here from the Darlington Lines Club? All right. Come on down. Appreciate what y'all do. Been out for a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Darlington Kiwanis Club out here, this is the oldest civic group that we have. Anybody? Huh?
Mr. Seekers is on the board.
Mr. Seekers?
All right.
Appreciate what you do. Whatever you do, we appreciate it. The St. Landmark Commission.
George Chase, I should say, buddy.
Who?
George Chase is on that board.
George Chase, well, come on down. Don't be shy. Say that stuff about your mother. The Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Nobody here? P U United, PD United S 1679. Watch.
You see, I should jump up over you?
I'm very old.
We want to thank you for what y'all do.
Thank you.
Okay?
Good cook.
Good cook. Darlington Branch of N W A C P. The Block En Club. Want to thank y'all for what y'all do.
That's it.
Darlington Power Club, the great ladies. We had a great time last night, locked up that beautiful tree down there, sit there next. These ladies are great, work hard. The Tree Board, anybody from Tree Board? Nobody here from the Lord's Care? We know what they do. They do a lot. Lord's Care? All right, come on down. And we want to thank the church for giving donations to the Lord's Care too. Darlington Rotary Club. Anybody here from Darlington Rotary Club? Oh, the Beautiful Cation Board. I know somebody here from that. Nobody? Thank you, sweetie.
Appreciate you so much. Thank you so much.
Planning Committee? The Park Committee? Anybody here from Women's Park? St. John Alumni? That one, I can't get like that one yet. I got some to do with that one.
All right, okay.
Oh, can't get like that one yet. Got another bag for that. Okay, Mount Zion Church.
All right.
Soup Kitchen. Anybody from Mount Zion? Okay. Alpha Phi Chartered? Nobody from that one. Get that later. A New Beginning Church? S G S? Roundo?
Always right.
Going on a little over two years when I got that call from Reverend Williams at Church of God and I told him I would help any way I could to get it started. And I didn't, it cold, they didn't stop. I got the fire department and the police department to work together that time and they got some canopies out there to put out there for the heat and they got some fans out there and put a little, tried to put a little heat out there for them. But then it stopped. It was cold, y'all.
Yes, sir.
It was cold. But now we got them in the building and they just loving it. Flat Creek? I could pull it up and I looked and saw your face.
All right, we still on that.
Thank you, baby. Thank you for your work. Divine Purpose Ministry. Cherry Grove.
I'll take a beer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Free Will Baptist, Free Will Baptist, Bible Baptist. Any Baptist? One, two, three. Fitness World.
I can get to it. Thank you.
First Baptist. Temple Baptist. First Church of God. That's the beginning, right begin.
First lady, the beginning.
Yeah. Central Baptist. Central Baptist, okay. Give this to them, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's it. We want to thank you. Anybody I miss, just let me know. We appreciate everything you do. Appreciate everything you do here for Darlington. It takes all of us to do what we need to do. And Darlington's lit up is beautiful. Lights, wish you could stay up all year long. Looking for the light there.
It's on the county.
Okay, B? Prove a, prove bid for Virgil Wells Stadium ticket booth. You look at your package, you have a bid for $14,500. A ticket booth, 110 by 10 block building, a steel door, built with a metal roof, two ticket runners, lighting fixtures, wiring and painting. Only one thing, I didn't see a place to put, we talked with Mr. about a place to put for air conditioner. I'm talking, Mr. Levy? Yeah?
Yeah, we can, we can talk to Mr. Scott about that.
Anybody got any discussion on that? Yes.
Why do we need a ticket booth out there? Are we charging for admission?
Yes, because when I went out there one day, I saw some ladies sitting out there trying to take money and that's kind of otherwise. Don't they take money out there?
We, we don't take up money for our re- let me come up there.
Yeah, of course, everybody.
We don't take up money for our recreation games. We leased the field out to the PD Vikings and they take up money from under a tent. So that's, that's what she said that night. But as far as us taking up money, we don't take up money. We don't charge to get into our recreation.
Yes, sir. So if, for example, for church group or anybody or anybody wanted to rent the stadium for concerts or anything like that and going to charge a fee to get it?
Now, we could, we could supply them with the ticket booth then, but it's, yeah, yeah. I mean, we'll use it if you, but we don't charge to get into our game. We won't use it. I mean, we may have people that rent the field that will use it.
Right. So we should have a new ticket booth for safety reasons. We need a ticket booth. Anybody just got any discussion before we go?
Thank you, Mr. Levy. How are we going to pay for it? Where's the money coming from?
Hospital tax fund.
Just out of curiosity, does the rent we charge cover, does the rent we charge to some entity that wants to use it, does that generate any income that can be used for some of these expenses?
It depends on what we rent and what we rent it for.
We can start with that.
Right. If we're renting it, if we rent our facilities out for a birthday party, we don't charge the same thing that we would charge Mayo Alumni or St. John's Alumni for the weekend because it's going to be more expenses on the bigger people that are doing it, especially if they're charging. And that's one of the questions that we ask on any facility that we rent is if they're charging that admission. And then there's some steps that they have to go through to how many people's going to be there. And everything runs through our chief for the police department as far as, because we've made, we've had some incidents where we've now, it's mandatory that there's security on site. So we charge that fee. What is the fee? It just depends on what it is. And it's upward of $400 or $500 for some entity, for some people. And if it's for a birthday party or something of that sort, we usually try to steer them to our gym facilities and that way it's not as expensive for them and it's not as expensive for us.
I'm trying, I'm sitting here thinking and I'm trying to remember if I ever been to a stadium where there wasn't a ticket booth.
There, there are some places. I'll tell you, Bally Park doesn't have ticket booths. Let me rephrase this. Bally Park doesn't use a ticket booth. There's no ticket booth at Freedom Farms as far as their football facility. Every big football field has a ticket booth.
Yeah. But the point I was trying to make is, like I say, I haven't seen it. I'm sure there's some out there, but I don't know if that's the norm and if most stadiums have ticket booths. But then we put money in to get the stadium right and then we put Coach Virgil Wells' name on it, which is a legacy in the community and have done a lot in the Darlington Public School System. And if we're going to put his name on it, I think it need to be a hundred percent completion so that it's recognized right.
Like I said.
I don't know about the air conditioning part of it, man, but I do think we need a ticket booth from, and I agree with Councilwoman Backus from a security standpoint. Time is different now. And somebody sitting up on the tent collecting money, I don't know how secure that is.
If we build it, it will be you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to stand here and just accept.
Any other question? Can I get a question? Other question before we go and get a motion?
I approve that we approve the bid for $14,500 for the ticket booth at the Virgil Wells Stadium.
I'll second that.
Okay, and if they approve a motion that we get Virgil Wells Stadium ticket booth for $14,500 and then later on I guess we can get somebody else to add also things that I want to take some money off of you.
Look here, Mayor. Everything's a work in progress.
Yes, it's a progress. All in favor, let me know if I sign aye. May I have same right, motion carries? Thank you. Any, oh, I'm sorry. Any needs? No, okay. Motion carries. Okay, C, the Buckey Refuge Order Enforcement Discussion. I think we had the agenda some time ago about that, just back. Well, Mayor, the Buckey, the Buckey Refuge Orders is in reference to the, we're trying to clean up the city of Darlington. We've got trash all over the city and we've got continuous offenders that's placing all kinds of things in the same spots over and over. So we're trying to do something to get that, that problem solved. Mr. Garland has some more information that he want to give us about the Buckey Refuge.
Thank you, Councilwoman Backus. We, Ms. Karen, Carol and I and Ms. Backus have mentioned several times about this. We canvassed the town and we identified some streets that have habitual offenders. So what we're, what we're doing in addition to sending a codes enforcement letter to these folks, we're going to mention streets this month. If the folks continue to be offenders on this, we're not only going to follow this up with tickets, but we're going to start mentioning addresses at meetings. Um, but we're going to start mentioning addresses at meetings. As you know, these folks are putting out mattresses and couches in your neighborhood and then turning a blind eye. It's time to stop this. Uh, corner of Darlington and Parrott, corner of Parrott and Sycamore, Chestnut Street, Westboro Street, Jessamine Street, Edwards Avenue, First and Ross, Reed Street, Bacok Street, Avenue D, Second Street, Greenway Drive, Richmond Street, and Second Street. And, uh, I believe there was, uh, Schuler Street also, one that was, uh, it was called in yesterday. I did. So, folks, if we wanna clean up our town, we need everybody's help. Um, a lot of these folks put something out and they go put it on empty line. And then we check on it and it's like, well, I didn't see a thing. If you wanna keep your neighborhood clean, we need your help. It's an honest effort by your elected officials and appointed officials to clean up our town. And if we go and clean up a couch, or take up a mattress, or a chair, and then something's back there three weeks later, it doesn't make any sense to us why you don't take more pride in your neighborhood. Help us, help you out, thank you.
Okay, anybody that's got anything, say it by there. So, so what are we gonna do? We're not, this is just for information, right, Ms. Backus? I think we already voted on this deal.
No, this is just information. We've sent out, we're sending out enforcement letters, and if it continues to be a problem, we'll write tickets and we'll follow up with, uh, announcement of individual addresses at a public.
Okay. Um, D, video cameras, tree cutting knives for the back truck. Okay, the back truck was a great thing that, um, we purchased for Donaldson. Um, everybody know that during the storm, the back truck came out and sucked the water up. But what it didn't do, we didn't have a cutter or a camera. Um, I know one day on Jessamine Street, Chestnut Street, they had two, um, storm drain catch bases on each side of the street. They came out earlier and sucked all the water, water up. But then when it came out another downpour, it filled back up again. So that's making me think the water has no place to go. It's just stopping, it's going and stopping. Over in Oakdale, um, Alabama, the water is, doesn't have a place to go. So a man came to me and they were saying we can get a cutter. They have roots growing in the sewer line. And the sewer line stopped up the same way a ditch, if you got a ditch. And you throw furniture, um, televisions and everything in the ditch, it stops up, it can't get from one ditch to the next. So it has to be cleaned out. And so, um, I have some prices in there, if you look at all the prices on the third page. I think the first two are for, um, a camera. Price for a camera. Nine thousand eight hundred two dollars for one and nine thousand four hundred three dollars for the other camera. And then the cutter, rotating cutter for seven thousand seven hundred thirty-two, four dollars fifty a cent. I think that would help us out a whole lot if we was to get that. Because right now, all they do is just sucking up water. And maybe they can, they can push with the little truck or the other thing, they can shoot.
Or they can shoot gentle water down the line.
They can shoot, shoot the water out, but as far as cutting the roots out of, um, pipe, they can't do that. They have to have this equipment. Now, we got this expensive truck. And so I feel we need to vote, I think that's the twenty-five thousand dollars left to go to get one of the camera and the, um-
Looks like it's about seventeen or eighteen thousand.
Seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars that we can get that to help the back truck out. So we can make everybody happy. We can start the process of getting some of those roots out of line. Now, Brian had to say my first.
Oh, Frankie, or Freddie, I apologize. Um, the two different camera bids we have, what's the difference?
And the two here, I, the mayor got these bids, I do not.
Can you, do you know the difference?
No, I don't know who that guy gave, Mr. Garland, um-
Mr. Kinsol, do we have any equipment like this company upstairs, cameras?
We've got an old push camera that we use for sewer lines. Only thing different, I, I see this one is battery. Hours, you have to have a generator because it is under ten volts. But, um, you push it down the drain as far as you can push it. Works great on four, six, eight inch sewer lines. As long as you don't have to go too far.
The one that you have?
Yeah.
It works that okay. You said it works, I was about to ask.
It's what they call a push camera. It's like a sewer snake basically, except it's got a camera on the end of it and a light. And you push it down, like a service line, the lines of your house out to the sewer, main sewer. But the camera's small and it won't give you a large pipe. Cause it worked good up to six, maybe eight inch.
And how far will it go roughly?
Depends on any obstruction or how rough the surface is that you're pushing.
So, now this camera that we talked about would fit onto the truck?
No, ma'am, this was just standing along on this, just a standing along camera.
So, okay, what they saying they need it for? I mean-
Usually with the back truck.
Sit on-
Probably wasn't used.
On the back, but it's one of those things that when you look down the pipe, you can see what you're sucking against or pushing against.
See if you hit an obstruction. Though, I know on Broad Street, right, Ms. Pruitt and George Chase's house. They can go both way, but they can't go all the way through. Somewhere-
Something, something's blocking.
Mid road, they're hitting something.
Well, that camera would help them to see what it is, right?
Yeah, a camera would do, yeah.
Would do it, okay.
One's, one's called a rigid reel and one's just called a rigid system.
Yes, sorry.
Do you know how, how they work, one versus the other?
All of them are gonna be a reel, like say similar, if you've ever seen a row of sewer snake. It's, it's a reel of, like I had. And you pull it out and push it, stick it in drain and push it. But it's a reel, you can roll back up. So you can pull it back up, it rolls back up around reel.
And what's those compact? We got it is a compact supposed to be better?
I think it's just a smaller, more compact unit.
So, so the one that you have, we have now, how, how far do it travel? Is it, how many feet, I mean, that you use it?
It's probably a hundred either two hundred foot, I'm not sure what the one we got, cause usually you can't push it that far.
So have you used that one yet with the back truck?
No, we have not.
Hey, why not? I mean, it really, would it work with it? I mean, I didn't know we had one.
If you can get it, uh, down, depends on where you can push it. But, I mean, I'm sure this is better than what we got, it's got a little small screen on it. I mean, it, it was here long before I come here.
Oh, you got it, okay, okay, okay.
And you gotta, you gotta have power. Like say you'd have to have a gen, you'd have to carry a generator with you to run the one we got now, because it is a, you have to plug it in.
Oh, but this one worked better because it had the battery.
It's a battery.
They had a real recharge, so you don't need to do that.
The problem you're gonna get into, and I'll use Edwards, Edwards Avenue for the, not Edwards, that Broad Street. And I'm on Edwards up, at Ms. Pruitt, Mr. Chase's house. That drain is probably twelve to fifteen foot down the catch base. So unless somebody's gonna do confined entry and go in that catch base and be at the bottom to push that camera, you can't drop it in that hole and make it, make that curve and push it.
So, Freddie, what I'm hearing you say, you, you don't seem to be so plus the camera as it is.
I, I got a quote on another camera. We can't afford it. But it's mobile, it's motorized.
So what about the cutter part? I mean, like you know-
Cutter, the cutter heads, there's probably dozens of different root cutter heads. I don't know particularly which one they have, there's two or three main kinds. But they work, I mean, if they're small roots. When we did years ago when Rodney Langley was City Manager on Cashwood in front of Shaw Darvin's house. It was so much, we had a guy come in with a root cutter and he went a half inch in about four hours.
Well, we can't use anything without a camera. We gotta have a camera.
I wouldn't, because give you example, this storm drain that runs right down Will Street here behind, by the fire department. When we had kept having cave-ins and we finally got accompanied to come in and run a camera up it. There was a three inch high pressure gas line in that storm drain. Had you run that root cutter in there, you'd have blown the city hall up.
So, okay.
That, that's my objection, not the roots, but it could be a sewer line, it could be water line. It could be anything, gas line. They, they drill these gas lines, so they don't know what they go through when they drill them.
So, it's from now, now they've got some clarity. There's no point in getting a cutter without a camera, so people don't know where to go.
I personally would not put a root cutter in a sewer, or a storm drain without knowing what was in it.
Okay, alright. So that we just kinda need to decide where we go.
Camera, you know, yeah.
And the camera, you won't cost over fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so, and as of first of year, it'll be seventy-five thousand dollars.
So we know we can't go there, right?
No, we can't go there.
Well, let me ask you something, Mayor. Um, the gentleman you talked to, who you talked to here at this company, you, could you think they'd be able to give us the information on what's the difference between these two cameras?
This is the same company, it's all the back, we bought the back truck. This is the, I got my quote comes from the same company, I'm sorry.
So that way we can, um, see whether or not we need to spend extra money for the first camera, if we can do the same thing with the second camera.
I would not, not, yes, knowing what the difference is for four hundred dollars, there can't be too much difference.
Four hundred five, that's what I'm saying.
And you, can you give us the information about what we need to actually work? Cause I don't want to spend any money until I'm spending outside.
That's my concern. This, you could push in a shallow, lot of the Oakdale area that drains aren't fifteen foot deep. Or the catch basins aren't fifteen foot deep. You could push, if you can get down to the end of the ditch and push, uh, is it Broad, it's not Broad, it's Broad.
Broad Street is out.
Is this down? There's no way to take, get down to that bottom, that cam, uh, push camera and push it across that back.
Do we know how many streets these kinds of cameras would work on versus how many streets need a-
It will work on a lot of them, because a lot of them gonna be either three to six foot deep.
What about Chestnut Street and Jessamine Street?
Probably, I don't think there's any drain when it's, if it's deep, there's not a lot of them.
So it will work on, as you know now, it will work on most of the street except Broad Street.
If you can get to the end where you can push the camera, you can push it.
And three to six, and three to six feet down is something you're comfortable with your guys working?
If they break the plant, they have, would have to do confined space if they go in, if they're sticking their head in that hole.
Okay. What, and please understand that I don't have, uh, I'm trying to visualize this. And I was thinking that this camera would be like an attachment. That whatever this thing goes down, that's the reason they were asking, that using the back truck when it goes down and they have encountered blockage, one way or the other, they need to know what that is.
It's totally separate piece of equipment.
So this will be going down by itself?
They will ride, they'll, they put this on the back of the pickup truck and ride it.
It's on a pole.
Yeah.
Okay, so. It's not attached to nothing.
Nothing attached to the back truck and on the root cutter will, root cutter will attach to the back.
Right, right, okay. And the camera would have to go by itself. So once they encounter a blockage of some kind, then they would send the camera down. I mean, however this done. And you're saying that these cameras that we're looking at here now don't have the capacity to go that deep?
Well, you can't push it. If you got a hole fifteen foot, you can't drop this and make it turn and then push it up in that pipe.
So there's no way to maneuver that?
No, no way, because this, this is gonna be a limber and when you're trying to push it, you just keep pushing it to the bottom.
It's three to six feet, anticipate somebody dropping in.
Somebody being able to reach or drop down in there and you push it, take a shovel or something and start it up in the hole.
So the one for seventy-five thousand can go around the curve?
It's motorized.
It's motorized.
It's motorized, it'll go six hundred foot down the pipe.
Okay.
Mr. Garland. The ones I see on TV.
Why don't we go ahead and get the fifty thousand dollar camera and finance it?
Oh, jeez.
I mean, if you're gonna do this, go ahead and do it right. If this, if this is something that can work around curves and go up hills and I was talking about Chris.
Yeah, and another thing, this, this camera's small. And like I say, when you stick a little camera, depending on size, you know, it's a storm drain. If you get, say, a thirty-six inch storm drain, you got a big hole and you're trying to look. And also if there's water or anything and it goes underwater, you can't see anything.
Ooh.
Right, okay, now. So, how many areas that are like Broad Street that's fifteen feet deep?
There's a lot of them on the main streets will be there. You probably Cashwood, Broad, Pearl, you know, the larger, the larger streets. They're under all the utilities and all, and with DOT, they're, they're deep.
So, Mayor, I'm suggesting that we just, um, no point in continuing discussing it, because we don't know what we getting. Maybe we could just get this company to bring it to us.
They'll see it.
And let them see what-
They'll, they'll do it.
Them guys and stuff, yeah, continue to talk about it, we don't even know.
In fact, he can, he can bring you both, he can bring you the chicken models, or they can bring you-
Right, show us.
Will you call and set that up?
Set that up, huh? Okay, that's a good thing.
You want it at the council meeting, or you want it, uh?
That still works.
I think it's something they'd have to do during the day.
During the day.
If you really wanna see it go on a pipe, you're gonna have to.
During the daytime, I'd see it during the daytime. Cause the one for seven, nine thousand or something, you said they can't go around the curve, it came a new one.
Uh, you can push it, but-
But it might not-
A storm, a storm drain is, is usually a concrete pipe, which is real rough. And it's got joints.
Okay.
If you push it and you hit that joint, you're not, you're not gonna go any further.
I think what, whatever we do, I think that would be a good investment, because that would stop some of the problems that we have.
Oh, yeah.
As you know, we're getting more water now.
Oh, yeah.
More waters coming in. And so we got to do something, we just can't let it just sit there.
No, I agree with you wholeheartedly, I mean, the root cutter and the camera, but I, I myself don't wanna put a root cutter in a pipe without no one's-
No, uh-uh.
Can we push this, can we push this demonstration out till January?
Yes.
It may be that, by the time we can get it.
Yeah, January, we do, do for January.
My question was, uh, when we did, of course you weren't here then, but when we did the project on Cashwood Street, we had somebody come in with a camera, cause I got in the truck and I saw what I was looking at there. It was very similar to what you're suggesting. That's what they had then.
And I have a picture of the, the camera, I'm talking about it, council wants to see it. The fifty thousand dollars.
The next question, the next question is, on the root cutter. What they expect here is eight inch to sixteen inch. What's that gonna do if you get into a large pipe, or do you buy a different sized root cutter?
You can, you get large, you get real large. But, uh, what you try to do is hopefully you would cut a hole for the roots. It may not totally clear the pipe.
Not clear the whole thing, right?
If you could get through an obstruction, then water could go through a lot better than it's gonna go through. Sixteen inch holes gonna be better than a two inch hole.
Well, you just set up the appointment and let him bring the one for fifty thousand.
I get it, get his camera, camera guy and come through now.
And then we can go somewhere and do a little demonstration.
I'm on it, January. Who, who had the camera that you were talking about? I mean, was it another company that we had?
It was a, a contractor out of, uh, Somerville. Somerville, somewhere in there.
And they had the camera that you, the fifty thousand dollar camera.
Probably more than that, but, yeah, they had, uh, we spent a lot of money.
Well, they worked four days for forty thousand dollars.
Okay, that's what I wanted to have, that was the next question.
Cause they live in-
And they were the owner, they had the camera.
Well, and then you cut the roots out, that, that was the time, cause then, then a man actually crawled up in the storm drain.
And that was just a one day, one time thing for forty thousand.
One time, cleared one block.
One block, that was on, on Cashwood Street.
Yeah, from Shaw Darvin's house down to Spring Street.
Okay, thank you, we'll get you to get that set up for January sometime, thank you so much. Um, E, approval of, anybody that's got anything to say, wait for January for that. Um, approval of two thousand nineteen City Council Meeting Agenda, anybody look at that?
Oh.
So we can approve that agenda tonight?
And you open to make note of the differences of-
Right, go ahead.
We have New Year's Day is June, is Tuesday, June first, or sorry, Tuesday, January eighth. So we are, New Year's Day is Tuesday, January first, so we moved the meeting to the eighth of January. And then Election Day for twenty nineteen is, uh, Tuesday, November fifth, so we moved that meeting to Tuesday, November the twelfth. Everything else, first Tuesday of the month.
Very good. I'd like to motion that we approve the two thousand nineteen City Council Meeting Calendar.
I second their motion. Okay, it's a proper discussion. Um, it's a proper, we would second that we received, uh, approved the two thousand nineteen, um, City Council Meeting Agenda. All that favor, if I may say, I, uh, may have a saying right, motion carries, thank you for that. Um, now I received the information, you have all your department reports in there, no action needed, we got any questions about it. Call the department head, call Mr. Garland, set up the appointment. Um, Councilwoman, I wanna thank, I want everybody to have a merry, merry Christmas and a happy new year. And like I said, like I always say, if you keep Jesus first, you do all right. Remember that Jesus is the reason for the season. You could, I, I don't know what you, but I know I can't do nothing about, about Jesus, about Jesus. He has to be in my life and I don't do anything. And, um, if you've got a conviction-
He has to be in my life. I don't do anything. And if you've got a conviction with you, whatever, it'll weigh on you. You got a conscience when you're doing wrong. And let's try to keep Dalton first and do right by Dalton. Everybody got something to do. Everybody's not getting paid for what they do for Dalton. But just do it because you see it need to be done. When I get in the morning, I do it like my mother, like I was raised up. If there's paint or a can across the street from my house, I don't say, well, I didn't put it there. No, I didn't put it there, but I want my neighborhood to look nice, so I go across the street and pick it up. I know my mother was living, she loved the garden, she was a gardener. I'm not the gardener, but she was the gardener. I mean, if trees needed pruning across the street, she pruned the trees. It wasn't her property, but that's what she did, because she loved the neighborhood to look good. And it came up in me too, so I have paid people to come on the corner from my house, where you couldn't see what you got, paid them to go down there and clean that section. Everything you do, you don't get paid for. You do it because you got a good heart, and I have a good heart. And I wanna wish everybody a merry, merry Christmas and a happy new year. And we wanna thank Mr. Garland for our nice Christmas gifts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garland. Davidson Brown for our nice gift, what we got. We wanna thank everybody, hope you have a merry Christmas.
I have a report, we get to that.
Okay.
I just, I wanted to ask on our city manager's report.
Well, ask what with the paper?
On our city manager's report, it's just regarding now the EDA grant application. I see where, okay. I see where you, you explained that it had been rejected twice, and that we have submitted another one on November fifteenth. And I just, do we have a different person, people? Are we, because I, I was just making a note that you, the grant application, who it was submitted by, are we still the same people submitting the grant, or we got?
PD council. They said everything got in.
So, these names that you have in here are part of PD?
Council government.
Clay Young, Dan Lindsay, Prive.
Okay, but that's, yeah, that's what I wanted to know, but they're the same people that's come submitted again?
They sort of didn't submit it.
Yeah. But are these the ones that they submitted it twice before it got turned down?
No, it wasn't turned down, they just sent it back and said the narrative need to be expanded.
Okay.
We have enough.
Correct.
Oh, wow. Okay, so that's slowing it down, so what they got, is no way to there?
Yeah, they've had it several weeks.
Anybody got any, okay, any council comments? That's the way to do it.
Okay. Aw, hate to mess up our December, but if that other camera's gonna go from fifty K to seventy-five K, maybe we should have an expedited interest in that to be worked out in December.
Freddie, how about talk to them about holding the price until they can at least give us a chance to look at the camera?
Until January.
He's gonna buy a few, and so they, they may have some after January at that price. I talked to him today, and he said they were planning on stocking a few and trying to sell, you know, at that price.
So is that's the only company available that has those cameras?
They is the one local that we bought the truck from. He's out some, they're out some.
See if Amazon's got a good price.
Well, he's got a GoPro.
Yep.
GoPro and a remote, full wheel bed.
We could do that for a lot cheaper.
Everybody else? Well, I just wanna wish everybody a merry Christmas, a safe Christmas.
Reminder, Monday, Wednesday, December twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen Christmas holiday, the city offices will be closed. Tuesday, January eighth, two thousand nineteen, six thirty PM, regular Monday meeting, Dalton City Council. Yes.
If we'll just run something in the paper for those people whose city services like garbage pickup would be on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, if we'll just put something out there letting them know what the makeup day is going to be, or if there is gonna be, certain services are gonna be available on Monday and Wednesday. Let's just let the community know those services will be available.
Let's get that motion.
I approve that we adjourned.
All in favor? Thank you so much for coming.